Good evening and welcome. I'm trying to be gentle on this gavel. And welcome to the Town of Woodfinn Monthly Town Council Meeting. Today is August 19th, excuse me. It's 5:00 o'clock. We'll start on time. We're glad to see people in the audience, and I would ask that everyone in the gallery, as well as on the dais, to please check your phone and make sure that it's either muted or turned off. We'll save ourselves from embarrassment. First item, of course, will be the approval of the agenda. I hope everybody's had a chance to look at it. Is there anything that needs to be adjusted on the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to add one item toward the end of the new business agenda, specifically a discussion on designating Woodfinn ABC store allocations to the Town of Woodfinn to address specific town needs.
But it was added after it went public, so is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say yes. Okay, very good. Let's just keep it. Court keeps me on the rules. Very good. The next item is the consent agenda. There were a lot of things on it. I need to point out one item on Item 6, the Walk Bike Woodfinn. There's an error on Page 51. It states that the town learned that a feasibility study of a sidewalk or side path on Riverside Drive was funded through NC DOT. I double-checked with Tristan Winkler at MPO Land of Sky. That is not accurate. I don't know if that matters in the big scheme of things, but I did want to point that out. There is something on the STIP related to it, but it's only a concept and it hasn't been funded. So it has a price tag on it, but that's an informal price tag. So we hope that someday it will be scoped and funded. But other than that, are any comments or questions for staff about the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Very good. Consent agenda is approved. We next move into public comment, and I have one resident who has signed up. If anybody else would like to speak and did not sign up, last chance. If not, we'll call on Ms. Eleanor Floyd. Would you please come to the podium and restate for the record your name and your address, Ms. Floyd?
Eleanor Floyd, 49, Audubon Drive.
Welcome.
And I want to tell you, I have a tremor. My voice shakes and my hands shake, so I'm fine.
You are fine.
I gave the members of the board a map, and this is pertaining to traffic safety and fire safety are my main concerns. And if you look at the map, it has Riverside Drive at the top, and then it has Charter Mountain with 278 sites. That's in a box. That's to count the number of buildings. And then Altura off to the side with 400. And then you look on further down, and you see Altura Parkway, and that turns into Wind Whisper, which is not on this map, but it also goes into Firethorn Drive. Now, that's the way all of the traffic from those two proposed sites will run. And it will come out down at the bottom on Mills Place. But you see, I've put a note in there that says Stillview. There's a very short street with one house on it.
Yes, ma'am.
To go on that street, you have to take a very sharp right turn. You go the space of maybe two house fronts. Anyway, then you take a sharp left turn, and all of that traffic is going to have to come down Wind Whisper or Altura Parkway, whichever one you want to call it, and go on Stillview. Now, that's only 17 feet wide. Wind Whisper is 21 feet wide. Now, fire codes say you must have a 24-foot street with guttering and curbing. So none of that meets the fire code. None of that up in there. Just for your information, I went on Running Ridge. It is 11 feet wide. A fire truck is 8 to 10 feet wide. That's just for your information. But anyway, when you come on down from where I have Bear Bridge, Running Ridge, and Audubon, there are 82 residences in that section. You come on down to where you see the New Bridge Apartments, 302, is in a box. That's the number of apartments. All right. Go on around, you see 150. That is for Mills Manufacturing. Okay. And you go on to where you see the black dot. Oh, I forgot. The parking lot for the apartments. It's between Mills Manufacturing and the dot.
Ms. Floyd, you only have three minutes in public comments, so wrap it up.
Okay. The dot is where we all have to enter Exit 23. The DOT, I've met with them three times. That intersection will not have anything done to it for 10 years. That's what I was told. They're going to come from Asheville to the UNCA exit and stop. So 10 years down the road, something will be done about this.
We thank you, and we hope you'll come back next month if it's on the agenda. There'll be a public hearing, and we look forward to hearing from you again.
Okay, but just read the comments that I'm saying.
We have it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Three minutes goes by in a hurry. It does. Okay, presentations and reports. Shannon, kick us off, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight's town manager report is going to be a little bit different. I'm going to do my Helene recovery update. I'm going to talk very briefly about other updates in other departments. But this evening, under Presentations and Reports, we also have presentations from Adrian Eisenhower, our Project and Facilities Director, and Ricky Hurley, our Planning Director. So I'm going to skip over those departments because you're going to get a more detailed report from them. But I'm going to use that extra time to talk a little bit about the council's strategic plan that was adopted back in the spring, and then sort of give you the six-month mark, or not quite the six-month mark, of kind of the work that's been done, progress to date. So to begin talking about Tropical Storm Helene Recovery, this has been a month of mixed news. We've had some good news and some not-so-good news. The good news is Silverline Park is open. The contractors working in the French Broad River have finished that portion of the French Broad River, so they no longer need Silverline Park. And I believe our waterway work is almost done. We were also very close to having, actually, we were done. We had construction bids ready for Silverline Park, but a very productive meeting between town staff, our design professionals, and FEMA representatives, exploring additional mitigation for Silverline Park is going to cause us to kind of hit pause button for a little bit, explore those mitigation opportunities, potentially fold that into our bid. So that might be, we were originally planning to go out to bid at the end of this month, so it might be more like mid-October or so. The not-so-good news is that the Roads and Culverts engineering work that has been underway, we were told that we're about 10 to 12 months out for that engineering work to be completed. That was a shock to us. We expected it to be done sooner than that. This gives us some concern, not just because it's delaying the work from happening, but also we're not sure how well this meshes with the FEMA deadlines for reimbursement. So we've asked the engineering firm that we're working with to examine the schedule and see if there's any way we can expedite it. So as I learn more, I will be sure to update council. Also, we found out in that same discussion that seven of the road failures that we had included in our Public Assistance Project have been denied, or they were not approved for repair, and that's because they're upslope slides. So a lot of roads in Woodfinn have an upslope and a downslope. The downslope slide potentially undermines the integrity of the road, but the upslope slide does not. So that's being described more as an erosion control issue and not, you know, a potential public safety issue. We do have one road that, on our uphill slide, is the downhill side of a road that is above, but the road that is above is a DOT-maintained road. So it was recommended that that downhill portion of the road above be included in their PA project and not ours.
Can you give us just an example of one of them? What roads are we talking about?
Well, Denali is the road in Crest Mountain that has a fairly substantial slide on the uphill side, and it's the Ben Lepin Road that's above it. That is a state-maintained road. So that was disappointing, so we're going to have to look at other options for those failures. Other news this month is that the PPDR program got reinitiated through the SMART program. However, 24%, well, not all, so what happened when we switched to the SMART program is that the state began learning that other local governments were having issues with reimbursement from FEMA because much of the PPDR work that occurred was deemed to be ineligible. So before the state launched the SMART program in Woodfinn, they asked FEMA to reassess all of the individual applications. We had 136 in Woodfinn. I have a list of the first 75 applications that have been reassessed. Of those 75 applications, 24% were deemed ineligible. So about a quarter of our applications were found ineligible. More than half of the remaining are eligible but with conditions, and that's going to be different. Why they're ineligible, or what the conditions may be for some of these properties is going to be different from one from another. But probably the most common is going to be that the trees do not pose a threat to infrastructure, life, or property, or they're not in a maintained area. So if you have a tree that's in the woods or on the edge of the woods, they're not going to do anything about it. If it's down and it's in a maintained area, but it's not posing a threat to anything, they're not necessarily going to do anything about it. So that is the reason for many of these denials. We do not know yet the status of the remaining 61 applications. I assume they're still in review, and we'll get a second batch of those at some point, but I haven't gotten that yet. We also learned that there was some missed hazardous tree right-of-way work on Running Ridge. We did work with the contractors on notifying all of the property owners that were above that because those were very large, dangerous trees. And so their work was going to block the road, and it was a dead-end road, and so we had to make sure that they were aware that there would be no traffic in or out during that time period. That work was completed last week, so everything's back to normal. And then work in our waterways was suspended, again, and then not suspended, again. The sections that were originally approved are numbered, and then there were a number of what we call extensions that were extensions of those sections that were also approved. It was the extensions that the state specifically asked for work to stop in so that they could evaluate the eligibility of that debris. And they did lift the suspension, but they said that contractors could only remove material that was within 1,000 feet of threatened infrastructure. And that was the original direction that was given to us with waterway debris removal. But that direction evolved after because it was recognized that even if you were above or more than 1,000 feet away, if you had another major event, that debris could become dislodged and end up within 1,000 feet of your infrastructure. So I think that's where a lot of these extensions occurred, and so I think we're back to the original interpretation. So I am not yet clear on what that means for Woodfinn. I believe most of our water work was completed before this happened, so I think there may be a little bit in the French Broad River that was included in extensions that may not be eligible, but the state is handling that. At this point, the state's handling all of that. We don't have to worry about it.
Shannon, is that for Roads and Culverts, is that 10 months out from today?
Well, this month. For having the engineering done to go to bids, just to go to bids.
My understanding about the extension of the timelines is you can, the FEMA guidelines presume six months from the disaster, but can be extended up to two years.
Yeah.
We'll be knocking on that again.
Yep. So this engineering firm, one of the reasons we selected them was that they have experience working with FEMA-related disasters, so I think they're aware of those extension possibilities.
So to clarify, are you saying that we're at risk for it not to be covered?
Well, the FEMA regulations do set time limits on how long from the disaster area to expend the funds. And like I say, it's actually presumptively very short, like six months. A lot of this stuff was not anywhere near.
Yeah.
You couldn't even figure out what was wrong in six months. There are ways to extend it.
It is very, we've been told, it's very, very common to get the extensions at least 12 months, if not 24 months.
So the delay is based off of something other than the engineering firm or the engineering firms?
It's the engineering firm's work, how long they think it will take for them to come up with the engineering solution for all of those roads and culverts.
One additional question. In the river, if you look at Craigie Dam, there are pounds of debris up against the vertical post. There's still PVC pipe periodically up the French Broad in Woodfinn. Are we going to have to live with that?
If it is up against infrastructure like the dam or the bridge, no, we shouldn't have to. That should be cleaned up. It's the stuff that is beyond 1,000 feet of that infrastructure that is in question.
So what PVC is still in the trees is probably going to stay?
In the trees, yes. If it's in a tree, that would not be covered by FEMA. Now, we did contract with Asheville Green Works to do some additional river cleanup, and some of our nonprofits are also doing this work. So I do think there will be additional cleanup beyond what FEMA is responsible for, but I'm just kind of covering FEMA at this point.
Thank you.
So moving on to talk about long-term recovery, we are close to completing our work on the Woodfinn portion of the Helene Recovery Plan, and that is going to be due to Buncombe County by the end of August. That, once it goes to Buncombe County, their staff and their consultants are going to work on formatting the full document, and that is planned for commissioner adoption on November 16. Before commissioner adoption, though, I know our council, you all have seen our list of projects and some of the other supporting detail. We've refined that a little bit. We haven't added or deleted anything, but it's been refined slightly. And we're collecting a variety of photos, graphics, maps, things like that, to go with each of those projects at Buncombe County's request. I would like all of you to see that and kind of give the final blessing before it goes off to Buncombe County to be codified. So I will plan to have that on your agenda in September. So just to give you a little preview. And then we continue to look at CDBG, D R, and SURF D R training, and D R stands for Disaster Recovery. So these are annual revolving funds, CDBG and SURF. The D R is a special pot of funding that is specific for affected areas for disaster relief. As I participate in more and more of these trainings, we have some eligibility challenges related to being able to take advantage of this funding. I'm not sure it will work for Woodfinn. A lot of this is focused on infrastructure that we don't maintain. And then CDBG is also focused on, provides a lot of assistance for housing. Most of that housing assistance is for single-family to be allocated to the individual property owners, not through local government. So there are some limits, and it may not be something that we're able to take advantage of. But in the meantime, we're trying to learn what we can. We're talking to our area partners to see if there's an opportunity. We are looking at other funding sources and other assistance. We had a really good meeting with EPA staff. We have submitted our letter of interest, which is sort of like a grant application for technical assistance. And if we're awarded that, the EPA will send staff to help us look at some of our project ideas, to help us start to brainstorm on what next steps we might need to consider or what kind of sources of funding we may be able to look at. We also had our kickoff meeting for the Climate Smart Communities Initiative Grant that we received, and council may recall, this is a grant that was issued and awarded to both Woodfinn and Swannanoa. And Swannanoa will probably take a bigger position in this grant. Their needs are greater. However, much of their needs are similar to our needs, and so there's some synergy, which is, I think, why working with our nonprofit partners, they thought it was a good combination to put us together. But we had that kickoff meeting, so we'll see. We'll have more information soon.
Let me stop you there and ask a question to circle back, please, about the engineering delay. You said it is typical for FEMA to extend, but is that yesterday's administration or is that today's administration? Because I'm really concerned if we're looking at through yesterday's lens. So I maybe...
Everybody's telling, I think the impression I get from the staff who straddle both former and current administrations, that they don't seem to think there's any change in the potential for extensions.
That's the impression I get, is that the kind of allocation for Helene Recovery is not being touched.
How much money are we talking here? I mean, I don't, I just, I would not like to count our...
For roads specifically, I don't know. Adrian might know. I know our total ask is somewhere around 3.1 million right now.
That's just debris.
3.1 is just debris?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Roads and Culverts. Our cost estimate is just over a million, but the engineers add that it's going to be above that amount, which is why they're taking so long to get it right. So I don't know, but right now our cost estimate is just over a million.
I just wanted to note that I'm very concerned that if we're pushing up against the stated timeframe, given other things that we've seen.
Yeah.
I am very concerned about that.
As were we, which is why we asked the engineering firm. We more or less said, this gives us a lot of heartburn, and we're very concerned, and we really need you to look at this again. So.
I take it Woodfinn is not alone in that boat.
I strongly suspect we are not alone. And, you know, whether it's specifically about Roads and Culverts, or any kind of funding reimbursement, or process, or other construction delays, yes, everybody has their stories that are being shared. But it's okay with council. We will certainly communicate your concern as well to the engineering firms, see if there's anything that can be done. So that is the summary that I was going to provide about Helene Recovery. So I'm just going to move quickly through other updates, beginning with the Administration Department, contracts that have come in in the last 30 days. It's the Tax My Gov contract, $6,500 for the first year and $6,000 for the years after that follow within the scope of the contract. I think it's three years. We are in the process of getting trained on it, so it'll be a little while before we implement it, but we'll be sure to let council know as we implement that. And then we've renewed our agreement for Buncombe County tax collections. That is not a number I can exactly provide because it's 2% of the total collections. We are estimating around $90,000. Right now, this is a very busy time of year, especially for our finance staff, because just as we wrap up the budget, they launch straight into the audit. So they're doing a lot of work preparing for the audit. It is a more complicated audit this year, partly because of Helene and related issues. And some council members may have received the questionnaire, and I'll just say, if you have any questions, if you haven't filled one of these out before, please feel free to contact me or Sheri Powers, our Finance Director. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about it. It's important to answer it honestly, but also accurately. So if you have any doubt and you're not sure how our financial practices work, please ask us, and let's verify that with you. This is also a busy time because it's when we have a lot of different continuing ed and holiday vacations, summer vacations before school starts, and professional conferences. There's always a summer conference, so we've had a number of staff in and out for different trainings. I've listed a few there. Planning Public Works and Facilities, I'm going to defer to Ricky and Adrian, who will be following me shortly. So I'll wrap up with the Police Department. So big news, Woodfinn Elementary School is back in session, and our new SRO is onsite working with the school. So that's great. Our recruitment efforts continue. We have filled three vacancies in the last year. We've got one more to go, so we're excited to try to get that wrapped up. Our police have done a great job updating our materials and getting the word out. We're also in process with the Risk and Accreditation Program. Right now, that focuses on updating the policies so that they're in alignment with the accreditation standards, and so our chief has been working heavily on that. We've also been discussing some new defensive tactics training for our officers. Many of our officers right now, if they had to take control of the situation, one of the only tools they have available to them is their firearms. So we want to make sure that there are other options available to our officers before you have to consider something like that. So that's just kind of a sample of what we're working on right now. So before I move into Strategic Plan, do you all have any questions?
What's the Accreditation Agency?
It is the North Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation.
Thank you.
I was going to say that. I wasn't 100% sure. Oh, and I forgot to mention, special recognitions for our Woodfinn officers. So we've had three recognitions to share. One was another life-saving event, and our entire night crew were involved in this particular event. So Sergeant Arthur and Officer Sasaki Banks and Holden received recognition for that. We had an excellent customer service award to Detective Brad Wright, and then a professional development milestone for our evidence custodian, Stephanie Gosnell. So we'd just like to recognize the staff for that great work. Any other questions before I move on? Okay. So the Woodfinn Town Council Strategic Plan. So as I mentioned, you all had your retreat back in February. We're now at the six-month mark, so we like to kind of pause for a moment, look at those, remind ourselves what our goal areas were, what the objectives and action steps were, and just kind of take a temperature on how we're doing so far halfway through the year. So we have six goal areas. I'm not going to read them. There they are. They are also included on the town's website for anybody who is interested, as are all of the objectives and action steps. So it is a chart that lists all of the goal areas, and then with each goal area, we have objectives, and then within each objective, we have different action steps. Action steps especially, objectives too, but action steps especially, you will find as you work through addressing these different goals, that new steps that weren't previously identified are taken care of and done, and you could add them to the list. Other steps, you realize maybe weren't as valuable, and maybe you don't pursue them, or some new opportunity comes up and you realize you can take it in a different direction. So it's not at all unusual to have action steps that don't exactly match the ones that were listed in the plan. And I should also say, a strategic plan is very different than our comprehensive plan, and we talk about both a lot when we talk about local government. Comprehensive plan is a long-term, long-vision plan. We're talking about 10, 15, 20 years out. What do we want the community to look like in 20 years? Those goals and objectives tend to be very aspirational. A strategic plan is focused more on action steps, objectives and action steps, and it's short-term. It's one to three years typically, and it's more focused on specifics, and it's also based on funding. So aspirational goals, sometimes you just don't pay any attention to who's going to pay for it, how is it going to be paid for. You just sort of list it as this aspirational idea. But when it comes to a strategic plan, you tend to root those decisions or those ideas in funding that is available. So what I've done is I've taken each goal area, I've summarized the objectives, and then I've highlighted some of the action steps that have occurred within each of those objectives. So the first area goal, provide excellent town services. We have updating or adopting new policies, and I've listed some of the policies that we have, or codes, or things that we've done. If I elaborate on each of these, we're going to be here for a really long time. So I'm not going to do that, but please know that I can elaborate on any of them. not going to do that, but please know that I can elaborate on any of these. So if you are reading this list and you have a question about one or more of those, please raise your hand, let me know. I'd be happy to answer your question. The other objective area has to do with developing a town communication strategy. Communications is very broad, and one of the first things this council decided to do was establish a communications subcommittee. And that committee has been very active, meeting every month, I think since May, and has been making good progress. And I know our council member, Khan, is going to be doing a short presentation later to talk a little bit more about the work of that committee. And then I added a couple other communication items, but this is one of those objectives that I would not be surprised if at the year mark, you know, we've got five more action steps in there. The second goal area, promote affordable living, equity, and inclusion. So the first objective was increasing the number of affordable units. We have not added or permitted any new affordable units in the last six months, but that does not mean that we are not working towards establishing or promoting affordable units. So anytime we have a CZ application, or any kind of residential application, a conversation about affordable housing typically occurs with myself, our planning director, our town manager, or town planner. We have also, as I mentioned earlier, been exploring CDBGDR, and we've been talking to some of our area partners about some possibilities there. Engaging disadvantaged households. This actually, if, that is a summary of the objective. I think it's engaging disadvantaged households in the development of long-term affordable housing strategies, something like that. And that, I, upon reflection, we don't have any real specific action steps that I can identify as it relates to long-term affordable housing strategies. And what I realize now, reflecting back, is that much of that work is done with our area nonprofits. And then we coordinate and collaborate with our area nonprofits in different ways, but they're usually the ones to really explore policy and practices, and then they share the wealth of that information. But under that particular objective, we had a number of action steps relating to maintaining partnerships, integrating bilingual communications, community meetings. Now, that was supposed to be community meetings, I think, I think targeting disadvantaged households, but we have a lot of other community meetings that certainly don't exclude those individuals, and you can see a few there. One I do want to highlight is, we are talking now about exploring what we call Shop with a Cop program. A lot of different department, police departments do this, working with the elementary school to identify, we don't know the exact number, maybe 10 students or families that could really benefit with some assistance, and then there's some fundraising, and the police officer actually goes and shops with the family and helps purchase items for them for the holiday season. That is a great way to establish a relationship with our, with folks who belong to this population, and then start to kind of build that trust and break down those barriers. So we're excited to explore that program this year. And then, of course, there's the long-term affordable housing strategies. So council approved last year the manufacturing housing community overlay, and that, with that initiative, we did some outreach to the park owners to explore, to try to explore their willingness for a voluntary overlay zoning, or did they know about the poter ama model, and have those conversations. We didn't get the response to our request that we had hoped for. I think we met with two, spoke with one additional park owner, and I think that was it. So that was unfortunate, but, and exploring the ama poter model is something that we do, I think that's the kind of thing, you're aware of the model, you're familiar with the model, you know how to describe it, so that when the opportunity presents itself, you know how to introduce those individuals to that possibility. And then, of course, we started our emergency home repair grant this year. Staff regularly participate on the Home Consortium Housing Alliance. I also wanted to highlight that we are planning some work sessions for council. One of the best ways for us to consider expanding the supply of affordable housing is if we control property. We do not control a lot of property in the town of Woodfin, but we are talking about a redevelopment of either town hall, community center, one or the other, both, we don't know yet. And if we're going to consider that, we realize we probably need to start making some decisions sooner rather than later, explore the funding options or what our options are. And so we are planning some work sessions. We're going to try to set one up in September, and then again, maybe late October, early November. So please stay tuned for that. Okay, goal area number three, investing in transportation and infrastructure. The first objective was completing the Woodfin Greenway and Blue Way project. Council is well aware of our progress. Riverside Park expansion is in construction, so that is exciting. And I've highlighted a few other things there. I'm working on Silverline Park, and we are still looking at closing the funding gap, and Buncon County has restarted those conversations about the passive rec grants. So we hope to have that wrapped up soon. Identifying strategies to expand multimodal options, again, a number of accomplishments here. One in particular I want to highlight is examining Riverside Drive and other roads for safety improvements. I think this may be part of the Riverside Drive side path feasibility study that we were just awarded recently. And this is a DOT project, but we were the subject and the applicants, this was years ago, and they've just been able to fund it this year. But being able to add three-way stops at Woodfin, Elk Mountain, and Goodman Road, that would substantially slow down traffic on Riverside Drive. Now, that will really frustrate a lot of people, but it is a very effective way to slow down that traffic. And that is, I think, as I mentioned, I believe that that might be related to the Riverside Drive feasibility study, but also it's due to crash data, unfortunately. And our police department have been having that conversation with the NC DOT, also looking at a few other state-maintained roads in the town. Build community through the Woodfin Police Department, and that's not the exact title of that goal area. I think it's through Excellent Police Department Services, something along those lines. First objective, focus on recruitment and retention. Our police department, under the guidance of Chief Boykin, has done a great job. We've had good success with our recruitment, exploring career development opportunities for the officers. We're now looking at working towards accreditation. So these are all very positive things that create a positive environment for our officers. And then fostering community relationships. We have also been shifting towards a more community-oriented policing model that naturally brings the officers out into the community more and provides more interaction. There have been a number of events that our police department participate in on a yearly basis that are recurring, they come back every year, but we're doing more and more sort of those little things that, the one-offs, like leading the parade for the Vacation Bible School for one of our local churches. So these kinds of opportunities for community, building community relationships is becoming more and more common. I already mentioned the SRO and expanding the use of our social media was another way we've been connecting with individuals. Fostering Woodfin's sense of place, and that's sense of place through government facilities. So, again, the most direct way to do that is through our revisioning and redevelopment of town hall. Should we be so fortunate to be able to do that? The hurricane has influenced that now as well, and that's a new part of the conversation about if we did that work, how can we do it in such a way that it acts as a resilience hub, or provides a place of refuge, or provides ongoing support to our community so that we can continue to grow and thrive. So that's a new part of that conversation. Reducing the town's carbon footprint, again, that is most easily accomplished with a big new redevelopment project or new construction, but it doesn't mean you don't look at the other things. They just don't have as great of an impact. So we are working to restore constructed wetlands. We will be adding constructed wetlands to Riverside Park as well as the ones that exist in Silverline. Anytime we do any kind of update in our buildings, we try to look for the most energy-efficient or low, not just low-cost, but energy-efficient, lowest-carbon impact. So updating our HVAC, replacing light bulbs, adding the film to these windows, all of that kind of stuff. That's where they always tell you to start. If you're looking to make a difference, always start with the easiest, lowest hanging fruit. We've also been exploring EV charging in parks. We hope to be able to establish that. Those grants are not necessarily consistent, and we would like a grant. We don't necessarily want to pay for that, so we'll just have to keep looking at those opportunities as they become available. We did issue a grant this year to Asheville Green Works for some additional river cleanup, and I'll be talking about that later on this agenda as well. And then lastly, our last goal area, build community connections. First objective, supporting Woodfin Elementary. I've already talked about that with some of our other goal areas. And our police staff, as well as our mayor, participate in monthly advisory meetings with the school. Expanding community partnerships, that was one of the new subcommittees that this council formed earlier this year. I don't think that committee has met yet, and we have a lot of other work that's happening, so it's understandable, but I think we took the important first step. And of course, we continue to work on our partnerships just more informally, I suppose. And then something that I want to just mention, that I hope to find some time later this fall or this winter, is developing some sort of citizens' academy program. You all may have heard of these kind of programs. They're pretty common in other municipalities. Asheville has a very robust one. We would scale that down for Woodfin. We wouldn't be able to support an academy like that, but we could have different sessions where we invite our community in to learn about local government and what we do here at the town of Woodfin. And we could invite some of our area partners, Woodfin Water, Kripsey Recycling, folks like that, to participate in that as well. And then the last objective was council acting as ambassadors in our community, which I know you all do every day, so I didn't specifically list any action steps there. But, and that concludes my summary of our six-month check. Yes, sir?
Quick question. So is it reasonable to expect a pre-retreat update sometime maybe in January? Probably a lot, probably a lot shorter, but so when we go into planning for that year, we'll know what got done, what remains, what new things might...
I think last year I did that in the retreat, but if you prefer to have it, you know, the month before the retreat, we can certainly do that. Any other questions?
Thank you. Adrian Eisenhour, our Facilities and Public Works Director.
Hello. Before I get started, could you repeat your typo in the Walk Back Woodfin Plan so I can...
It refers to a, the feasibility study of a sidewalk and side path was funded, and I had Land O'Sky MPO office check today, and they said that they aren't aware of it, but it is on the STIP. It's been identified, but...
It was funded. We just had our first steering committee last week.
And was that with NC DOT?
NC DOT, yeah.
No, it's not on the STIP.
It may, it's pretty new. We had applied for the funding a couple of years ago, and we just received it recently.
How much was that?
Around $200,000. I don't remember the exact number.
That's wonderful. I'd love to be correct.
But it's an NC DOT project, so we're, they're doing it on behalf of the town, so all the money's flowing through NC DOT and the consultant.
So it's not, it didn't have to go to MPO for review or advice?
I don't know the answer to that.
I suspect the confusion is that it was applied for and looked at many years ago, but it's just funded this year.
Wonder if we can use that to leverage the identified project, which, what's on the STIP, and it's got a price tag of $10,880, and it would build sidewalks where possible, numerous traffic crosswalks.
On Riverside?
Yeah.
Maybe that's for construction, I guess. This is just the feasibility.
The paperwork on it, so when I get that, I'll forward that to you.
Okay.
I think it is fantastic. So it actually is for the feasibility study?
Right.
But it won't pay for anything like a crosswalk or a three-way...
All we're doing right now is the study. All we're getting funding for is the study.
Feasibility study is just for the purpose of exploring whether or not that's even possible.
And the $200,000 goes to...
That study.
Or the engineering...
And NC DOT hires those consultants?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So just a quick update on the Pilot Works Department and the Stormwater Department. As I did last year, I wanted to show you the difference in collection, or non-difference in collection for solid waste and recycling. So as you can see in the left-hand chart, solid waste collection rates have made, stayed pretty steady at just over 1,600 tons a year. Recycling had decreased a couple of years ago when we did the rollout carts. I think some people fell off of the list, but it's growing slightly, it's at least maintaining what it was last year. So that's staying about the same at about 440 tons per year. And looking at the cost for that collection, the left-hand side's tipping fees for solid waste, they're staying steady at just over 81,000 as the collection rates aren't changing a whole lot. The recycling fees are increasing based on our contract with Kirby. They include a cost of living or a CPI index increase every year. So we have included another 3% increase in this year's budget for those fees.
I thought that was going to be lower when we went with the new carts and the new schedule, when we went to every other week instead of every week, that that would keep those costs down.
The Kirby contract?
Yeah. We did too, the, not the cost, but the, we thought the amount of recycling would increase, but the cost would probably stay about the same because Kirby increased the prices. So we hadn't renegotiated our contract two or three years ago. So, two years ago. That's a big jump. Yeah. Thank you.
As I showed you last year, and this is about the same as it was last year, but for those who haven't seen it, the, what's made up of the recycling flow each year, the main source is that orange pie piece, 36% is corrugated cardboard. The next biggest, 31%, is paper, and then it's kind of down from there. So glass is 25%, and then the two little slivers are plastic and cans. But that's about the same as it was last year. This year, I wanted to show you a new pie chart, and that is the, on average, the monthly responsibilities of our public work staff, and what they do, what takes up their time. So that big pie piece, the green pie piece, 60% is our sanitation work. So they're spending 60% of their week doing sanitation. And the other 40% is kind of made up evenly of street maintenance, park maintenance, and brush pickup. And there's a little sliver in there, the 3% of tree removal on roads and private property is needed. So I just thought you'd find it interesting to see what takes up their time each month. Other noteworthy items from the Pilot Works Department. So last year, I gave you an update on brush pickup and collection rates, and it had increased about 50% for various reasons. And with that came a 38% increase in disposal costs. But this year is a different story. Brush has decreased about 50% from where it was last year, and that's most, probably due to Helene and FEMA handling most of the debris removal for several months this year. So that'll probably change next year again. We have, for staff, we have one open position for maintenance worker. We had filled that for a couple of weeks, but it's open again, so we've re-advertised and are looking for somebody to fill that position. We did have two employees recently earn their CDL, so we've had, we have some more drivers on staff, so that's helpful for rotation. And then we were able to include the salary study and pay adjustments in the budget this year, so they've received that at this point. For parks, as Shannon mentioned in her update, Silverline Park and Riverside Park are reopened temporarily until we get the repairs for Helene going, but that'll be at least a few months. The community garden's up and running, but there was a issue with drainage. There was a standing, a standing water problem in the garden area, so our guys were able to go out and install a drainage improvement for them, so that's taken care of, and they're back in business. And then we have, we're working on Roy Pope improvements, as we talked about back in the budget cycle. So we've got some, we're waiting on the... So we've got some, we're waiting on the parts and installation. So for the playground equipment and the swing replacement and the benches. And we're still working on the canopy over the sandbox that, it looks like that may be obsolete, so we may have to replace the entire thing, but we're working on that and we'll get you that as soon as we can.
Did you not have that just handmade by someone?
Yes.
I mean, it's for someone who knows what they're doing, that shouldn't be that hard to-
Big canvas space. I mean, I'm open to this. I'm open-
Mills Manufacturing, I mean, they sell parachutes and every other scrap canvas, anything you could ask them.
Yeah, we could. Moving on to stormwater. So now that the town has taken over permitting from the county, I thought I'd give you a snapshot of what our staff do with the permits and how much time that might be taking up for them. So right now, we have 57 total completed or in review stormwater permits. What does that mean? So 19 of those 57 permits, or 33% of those permits are complete, which means they've received a certificate of compliance and the infrastructure has been installed. And we require annual inspections of that infrastructure. So staff has to keep up with that separately or in perpetuity. 16 of the 57 permits or 28% of them are awaiting final inspection, which means they're close to completing their project. And once they do, they will be issued that certificate of compliance that will then be transferred to a complete status and that annual inspection process will kick in. And then 22 of those permits are in process, so it's active construction. They're still working on it, but eventually those will be in the completed permanent process and require that annual inspection. So that keeps staff pretty busy. Another update on stormwater. So we had reported that we were waiting on our MS4 permit renewal and we had submitted our stormwater plan to the state and thought we were going to have that permit in July. But we recently learned that all the new renewal applications are on hold because the EPA is looking at how the erosion control component is handled, more at a state or county level, probably want to affect the town and what we need to be doing. But they can't issue those permits because that's part of the permit requirements. So it's on hold until they figure out what they're going to do with erosion control. In addition, they may be making just overall changes to the permit requirements, which would be less of a burden administratively to staff, but we don't know what that means quite yet. So we're just waiting on DEQ to give us an update. We did learn through that conversation that the private SEMs, the control measures that are installed through those permits that I was just talking about, have to be inspected annually by staff, not by the property owner or by anybody else. Staff has to handle that. So that's kind of new for us. We're working out how that needs to look. And we also learned that we need to inspect all of our major outfalls annually and include our minor outfalls. Problem is, we don't exactly know where all of them are right now. So that's opened up a new project for us to do. So looking ahead, one of the first things we want to do is advertise a new request for proposals for the five-year capital improvement plan for infrastructure repair and replacement. We had advertised that last year and the day the solicitations were due was the day Helene hit. So that was put on hold indefinitely. But we're ready to get started on that again and hope to have those advertised in the next couple of months. We're also talking to an engineering firm helping us with mapping out our outfalls for that state compliance I was just talking about, so we can inspect those on an annual We're also letting the property owners know that the annual inspections are going to be happening. So we've sent out some letters to let them know that process is starting. This will be our first year doing it, so we're kind of learning as we go, but we have sent that letter. As I mentioned, we're beginning the repairs at Roy Pope. We're also going to begin the paving project at Five Taylor Street, which is the Polite Works Department, to repave their entranceway and parking lot. And then finally, we are looking to implement a work order platform to use with our Polite Works Department that could integrate with the text my gov, I believe y'all are aware of, so that citizens can let us know through that system of issues and concerns around town that our Polite Works Department can handle. And then we'll have a record of what we've done. So we're excited about that.
Can you remind me, you mentioned Sullivan, but remind me, repairs at Roy Pope?
It's the, the stairs on the playground equipment are damaged and kind of hazardous.
They have sharp edges.
Yeah. So they're going to be replaced. The tire swing is missing, so it's going to be replaced. And the benches are in disrepair, so they're being replaced. And then we're working on the canopy over the sandbox.
It's, other than the tire swing, it's really all related to the stairs and the benches. It's the rubberized material that covered on it.
The red is grumpy.
Is the $15,000 that was set aside, is that going to be appropriate?
It will be, yeah. I will mention while we're on the subject, that little, I don't know if you're aware of the little bitty playground equipment that looks like a tree for little bitty kids. There was a hole in the slide that somebody brought to our attention last week. So I think the slide was removed or the whole thing was removed. But if that's different and you notice it, that's why. That's all I have. Any questions?
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ricky Hurley, our Planning Director.
Thank you for the introduction there, Mayor. So I'll just say that, as you would expect, a lot of development activity was down during the past fiscal year. A lot of that had to do with Helene. So the numbers are down and what I'll say is, it seemed anecdotally, we, as everybody, life stopped at the end of September and it took about February, March before we started seeing any life from just speculative building. And then, of course, we also have this macroeconomic climate going on with interest rates and tariffs and other uncertainties kind of starting to bake into the pie. So you'll see some adjustments to numbers in that way, but generally it's down or even. So the total permits here, my notes are not showing up there, but it was like 331 last year. We had about 252 permits this past year for total applications. As far as zoning permits, again, it's, the left side is the current year, if that's kind of maybe backwards to you. For zoning permits, that's typically houses, accessory structures, outbuildings, decks, interior renovations that are required, commercial permits. So we're again looking at about 233 the previous year, and we were right at about 128 this current year.
Ricky, that former slide, that's all permits including-
That's everything that we get. That's, yes, steep slope permits, conditional zoning, variances, special, special event permits. So pretty much anything Marie and I are processing is that total permits. I didn't include anything like chickens or street cuts on that one.
Chickens.
Yeah, we have to, you know, we got a few chicken permits out there. So orange column was the past year and blue column is the current or immediately past fiscal year. As you can see, we're kind of in par, like with subdivisions, zoning verification, variances, steep slope, with a very short bar graph, a few variations make it seem exaggerated. What you'll probably see that snowspool is home stays are down and that's notable because we changed our table uses last September. We eliminated homestay. So that's why that number's come down. Short-term rentals, really, that market has really started slowing way down. Enquiries, if you want to know, are way down. Obviously, you know, we had already sensed that a year ago. And I think with the Helene and the fallout from that economically, we have seen that the inquiries basically dry up on short-term rentals, the phone calls and emails. Otherwise, generally speaking, most applications are flat or up, maybe like signs are up a little bit. As far as the highlights, you may remember last year, we had a lot of new dwellings and a lot of that had to be due to like terraces west. We had a lot of townhome permits. We had the, what is that, Springs at North Asheville, the townhome community on Old Marshall Highway, they were going gangbusters last year with townhome permits. So those two projects really were responsible, probably for like 50-52 applications in and of themselves. This year, you know, that kind of threw the snake there on the terraces and Springs at North Asheville, again, the overall climate with Helene, there's a lot of stopping construction. It's always saying, we had 52 new dwellings. A lot of those were in, I'll say Olivet, that was the big area of construction. And then oddly, what I noticed was that we had a lot, what I call the heart of Woodfinn, I'm saying like Old Mountain Road, that kind of here on the valley floor, Jonestown Road just off of Elkwood. And then again, here on the north side, Skyland Circle, that area is where we've seen a lot of people putting in houses in those empty lots and just squeezing them in. The other residential I'm thinking is renovations, repairs, repairs due to Helene. Interesting, 13 roof-mounted photovoltaic system, PV systems. I guess people are trying to beat the punch here on, again, the change in administration, a big beautiful bill changed that. So people are racing to the finish line. Commercial permits, a lot of those were, we had some small upfits in the small shopping centers on Weaverville Road, the French Broad River Academy Girl Campus. Or a sanctuary is the church across the bridge that you see work has started, that office building as conversion. And then we have the battery storage facilities that were approved on Olivet Road and at the bottom of the hill down here by the substation. And then lastly, 23 subdivision recombination plaits. We netted 27 new lots, so.
Ricky?
Yes, ma'am.
How many active construction sites are there for single-family homes?
I don't know that because some projects, I'll say that I know some houses that are, especially like in Reynolds Mountain or in Serendy, that have been going on for over two years. Like they're actively, the bigger homes seem to, may out be a project that outlives me. They're, but I think the mayor lives near one site that it's been at least two-plus years under construction that's been about-
It's going to be three years.
Going on three. So some of the bigger homes are taking a long time. The townhomes, like at Springs at North Asheville, I think because it's kind of a, they have a system and they know what their, how many boards they need, they move very quickly out there. But-
Ricky, have a-
Yes, sir.
I was talking to the managing owner of Salt Place Mule, and he was telling me that it was taking a year to get permitting done for converting a go-kart structure into an event venue. And I believe it was Buncombe County, I guess, within outsourcing to Buncombe County, I could be wrong about that. And he was lamenting the length of time because the capital that he has to do that is sitting and he hoped to get that construction done before the end of 2025 for tax purposes. And I believe it has since been approved in like the last week. But I'm curious, do you have any comments on how long you're seeing it take Buncombe County to do permitting?
Well, I think, I'm aware of that project, particularly because when they called me about it, I was like, you haven't got your permit yet. I was, I said, we approved that in April. There, there is a substantial backlog with the county with, they prioritize Helene repairs. I think that, that, that was a, there was a lot of that with flood and the county building inspector's also done a lot of, went out and did substantial damage determination. So I, I don't know, Shannon, there was thousands and thousands of structures in Buncombe County that were impacted by floodwaters. Even if they just creeped into the building, they had to go look at that. So the county had really one floodplain manager that does the majority of their work, which was also doing our work and built more forestist work and also handles, built more estate. So you can think what they were covered by. So they prioritize that and that really ate that first six months up. And, and so, and so, and then there's stuff that was in the pipeline before Helene. And so I was shocked. I thought that kind of worked itself out, but I am hearing from the community that there is some significant delays with getting permit approvals. I, I have not asked in that and we wouldn't throw stones at Buncombe County because they've been, as a entity, they've been through a lot trying to help Barnersville and Swanau recover from this. So, but I would say that we moved that one pretty quickly on our side.
Well, I'm aware of that. It's fine.
Yeah, yeah. As far as code enforcement, past year, we've had 45 cases open. Again, it's not as much about zoning issues. It's more to do with solid waste, overgrown grass, the junk vehicles. We've had a couple minimum housing issues come in that were, in the end, were non-issues. And then not with Adrian's team, but with erosion stormwater runoff, we get quite a few of those. And obviously, people's awareness about that, post-Helene, went through the roof and people's worries, anxiety about that. So that was a huge demand, not for myself or Marie, but our stormwater administrator was, has been very busy with official complaints, much less phone calls that come in. And then as far as what we've done recently, we got the development code update launched out here in June. So y'all had approved those funds. We got that going. Thank you so much. The Woodfinn to Weaverville Greenway feasibility study, another study separate from the one Adrian mentioned on Riverside Drive, as well as the one y'all just adopted, the Walk Bike Woodfinn Plan. We have this going. It's back underway. You remember that the feds had paused the funds, it got back going. We've updated our flood damage prevention regulations, remember in April, Chapter 14. And then as far as zoning code updates, the table of uses and definitions, and then the landscaping green space that we adopted in June. You probably won't see much of that coming forward in the next year because we're going to probably pause that until the code update wraps itself up. And hopefully, for bearing any other natural disaster or anything else that crops up, we should have a new code update ready for y'all about this time next year. That's the, I think we were thinking, what, August, September, Shannon's, what, yeah, of '26. As far as, you know, Shannon's kind of a little, a little bit of a dip into your strategic planning, just looking back, you know, Woodfinn, together, our comp plan, we have some things in the appendix, like some goals. You remember we had a goal about, number one goal on that list was get that code updated, right? Get the code rewrote. We're now in progress. Underneath there, we had some other strategies and was protect manufactured housing. We done that in that spring of 2024, Shannon mentioned, about adopting that manufactured housing standards. The Walk Bike Woodfinn Plan will start addressing pedestrian crossings in the town. It was like, trying to focus on that. As well as it mentions restriping Elk Mountain Road and pedestrian features on the Craggy Bridge. So we've got that in a planned document now you adopted. As well as, we had another about environmental, environmental chap, chapter. We had a recommended species list. We got that one in our June code update. And they also had mentioned a flood development. We've done that this year as well. So I'm just, if you need me to show you that plan, we can at one point. Just want to mention that we are working through a document that you adopted a year and a half ago. We're actually checking boxes. It's not sitting on a shelf, so you should be proud of yourself on that. As far as our planning board of adjustment, even in spite of Helene, we did meet seven times. We've had a good, good attendance by our members. We have not had to postpone any case because of lack of quarrel. We're, you know, sometimes we have a vacation or something, but we're having five, six people at every meeting. We had three conditional rezonings, it feels like more, one general rezoning, two major subs, one variance, and three text amendments. And then keep looking ahead. At some point, we want to dig into doing some driveway standards, like specifications. We'll continue engagement with our steering committee for the land development code update. We actually met with Buncombe County. We're working on coordinating that transition of the floodplain permits from Buncombe County to- We actually met with Buncombe County, we're working on coordinating that transition of the floodplain permits from Buncombe County to us. And then we'll continue educating public engagement on floodplain development. And then I believe y'all have some training scheduled later this month for land use decisions, legal framework. I like it, all right. Any questions? I tried to go quick, I know y'all have lived a lot of these things, so I don't want to beat you over the head with it. I think there is a subcommittee update. Ken, do I need to bring up that PowerPoint slide for you?
Yes, if you would.
Okay.
It's already in there.
Okay, it's in there, all right, good, good, great.
I don't know, Ken has a small presentation, but I don't know if I'm allowed to.
We will next month.
Y'all been busy. It's great. I'm gonna try to be brief, but we had formed a standing subcommittee back in May around the issue of communications. With everything that's going on, we knew that this was going to be something that we wanted to be in front of. Because this is our first presentation to council, I just wanted to make a couple of things transparent. I am serving as the chair, but thanks to council members, Irvin, Young, and Thornton, we have a great team. I also want to tip a hat to Shannon and Ricky and Gina, all who have participated in our meetings and not just in an administrative sense. They've added value at every step and I'm very grateful for that. My role as chair, just to be absolutely clear, I convene the meetings, I facilitate the discussion, I facilitate building consensus. I think that's my role. Other than that, we are a team of equals and that's the way I hope we continue. So I wanted to briefly go through what we've been up to. And I've passed my first test in hitting the right button to advance this. It's going to be very brief, we've been working on a few things that we think are important. And we know there are things that are going to come up, which we haven't dealt with yet, but they're on the, they're on the dance card, if you will. First thing we wanted to do is establish a mission statement, so we know what we're doing and we know when we're going out of scope. We also know how to deal with opportunistic requests and I'll go into that in a minute. We have developed a community resource card, this started, I will give all credit to the rest of the team. We came in, in individual discussions before the council, before the subcommittee ever started, this was everybody's priorities. First, let's get some emergency information, resource card out there in the wake of Helene. We've taken a look at the website, we've done some things that needed doing. We've also started to build a roadmap for what might be done. And then we'll take a look at upcoming work. So now I've told you what I'm going to tell you. All right. The mission. And I wanted to say a little bit about this as background, the subcommittee agrees this is important to keeping our focus. It's very tempting, particularly, and I've been in advertising and direct marketing all my life. It's very tempting for scope creep to happen. Requests are made, they seem minor, but they can take you away from your basic mission. So we decided we should have this in place to remind ourselves. I always think of Walmart saying, always low prices. And everything goes back to that. So this is our much longer version of that. And I'll read it out loud for the audience at home. The mission of the town of Woodfin, hereafter known as the town, communications standing subcommittee is to provide suggestions and potential content to the town manager and staff for use in town communications, to the town's constituents, stakeholders, and existing or potential partner organizations. Further, all such suggestions and content will be evaluated not only for their benefits, but with regard to their potential costs and projected required effort on the part of the staff. Again, as council members, we provide policy and priorities. The areas that we think the mission includes, and this, by the way, is never, the mission statement is a living, breathing thing, but we believe we're going to address emergency related information. We're going to keep an eye on the website and I'll talk about that in a second. And then of course, we're going to get into things that are what I would call promotional communications, looking at opportunities where the brand identity and the visual identity of the town can be made more consistent, looking for promoting of town activities via newsletter, social media, the website. And as increasingly as things start to change regarding bigger projects, promotion of town amenities and attractions. And last signage, such as there are opportunities to improve or bring into consistency, we'll look at that. So I would say the current status of this project is the mission statement is complete, subject to ongoing refinement. And we do acknowledge always that being strategic means choosing and prioritizing with respect to available resources. Any questions so far?
Yes, can you talk about the first focus that we did, which was on the emergency notification system, all of that that we've been.
Coming right up.
Got it.
I'm so glad you asked. I did not pay her for that segue. The first project that we tackled, thought it was most important and probably something we could get. I think it took a little more time than I anticipated, but I think we've got a good work product. And I'll give, I'll give Jeremy Hunt some credit for this as well, because he showed me something that had been done a few years back that served as a model for this. The idea is not to provide the encyclopedia of interesting information around emergency reaction, but rather to give vital information for people in terms of who they need to call in case of emergency, what they might need to think about in case there's an emergency impending. And so what we've done is create a, we have a pro forma, is that the right word? Card. This will need to be proofed carefully, and we can certainly have other people look at it. It's been through a number of revisions. Eventually this will get designed by somebody, possibly in-house, that would be great. That's to be determined. And then we'll figure out production and mailing schedule. Our initial thought was that this would probably be an insert that could be included in the newsletter in the next version of it. That's not set in stone, but it seems like a very efficient way to get it into every household that we can reach that way. So that, anything council members want to add to that?
One more, so prior to that.
Yes.
What we worked on?
The text my gov.
Text my gov.
Oh, for goodness sakes.
Our primary focus.
That was our primary focus on communication.
It's been, it's already in process and I kind of forgot all about that. Text my gov was one of the first things and Shannon brought that to the subcommittee's attention. And I don't want to say it was a no-brainer because there's no such thing in municipal government, but it was a very easy decision to make. Thank you. How did I miss that?
We all in the chaotic midst of it.
Yeah.
But tell what that is, that that's the, the ability for us to, to send out blasts to anyone in town of issues, dangers. It goes into depth into getting information back to us and it'll be a process that, that's upcoming. Shannon, did, did we miss anything about?
That's for people who opt in, I assume.
Who opt in, but we're, we're looking at a mass blast initially to get, for it to go out to almost every phone in the Woodfin area. And so they could then opt in, but we're hoping when they realize that this is not just typical information, this is true emergency information, that people will opt in. You can also opt in for other things that say you want to know about meetings, whatnot, you can change your, your opt-in level. But it's primarily just to get the emergency information out there.
Good, thank you. I will say in my own defense, everybody had a chance to look at these slides.
I did, I did not.
But I missed that too, okay. Please reach out to us if you want to see more about that, but I don't think we want to go into the details of it. But we're pretty happy with everything that we've, we've kind of threw everything at the wall and then culled it back to what we thought people would absolutely need to know. The website, a couple of things. We took a look at it, Gina has been very helpful in making some of the, I would say relatively minor updates and changes to it. But we wanted to look at it in, in a broader context and we did some benchmarking, Betsy took the lead on looking at towns that we think are comparable. And that is actually not as trivial a question as it may seem like. It's not just about population, it's not just about relative affluence or budget. It has to do with things like we don't have a utility that we get to post information on and things like that. So we looked at those and the good news is that if you look at ours, regardless of what you may feel about the graphics, because that's very subjective and the look and feel of it, we're in pretty good shape. We have the kind of information needs to be there. It is updated in a timely way. There's always room for improvement and we will certainly be looking at that. What we've agreed to as a subcommittee is to probably take a look every five to six months and say, all right, what, what else is not happening? We also took a deeper dive and there are certainly things that we could do. They will take more resources and they'll take more time. They're related to maybe security or mobile presence and other things, but these are bigger projects. But they are at least on the table. So the current status is the initial request updates have been completed. And we have some broader areas for improvement that we've identified. And this may be, some of these things may wind up in our menu for consideration at retreat, just so you think. Upcoming work. Any questions on anything so far? Okay. Upcoming work, certainly we're going to look more at social media and how that figures into things. Certainly Facebook and Instagram, the website will continue to play a role. The, there is a communications work group, if you're not aware of it, related to the wave and the Greenway Blue Way. And we've been meeting on a semi-regular basis, depending on what the need was. Right now, that group is focused on communicating around safety and use protocols because not the two distant future, there's going to be surf on French Broad River. And it doesn't mean that the thing is done, but people are going to be interested in trying out the, the new features. So that's, the communications team has been working a lot at that right now. I would think by September, we will start to look at broader things about how the, the new amenities in town, how they get promoted. And while we have, we will have partners in that, we hope. I've been talking a lot to Mark Hunt about this, who as you know, is very involved with the project. His feeling is the town will certainly be taking a leadership role and what happens around that. So stay tuned for that. Woodfin Small Business folks are doing a lot of work in marketing, we're not doing anything with them yet. This is simply putting a pin in the fact that we're here to help if there's an opportunity for that to be useful. And that goes for other work group and subcommittee efforts as appropriate. And that is the update. Any questions?
It's a great update.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Onward.
Okay, unless I'm missing something, that concludes the presentations and reports section. Are we ready to go into a minute, a minute to break? We're good? And Debbie, we forgot to tell you that we have a new policy about handbags.
I was really glad to do it.
Things have changed a little bit. Okay, first item of new business is a public hearing to consider ordinance two oh two five dash fourteen. It's a request to modify an existential, an existing conditional zoning approved back in March of last year. Something near and dear to all of our hearts, the Rocky River Apartment Project. The applicant is Undara Gonzalez on behalf of the property owners, which is Rocky River Apartments, NCLLC. Mr. Hurley.
Thank you for the introduction. By the way, just sorry about the blue box that popped up earlier. The applicant, they had some schedule conflict and somebody, a personal reason. And so they're online to answer questions, so they're listening in. I'll bring them up in a minute when I get to my presentation. So you're like, what's happening here? Okay, so y'all may remember this over a year ago that we had approved this one hundred and twenty unit, one hundred percent affordable housing complex. As they've dug into that a little bit further, they've come forward with a modification to break the single building into three buildings and modify the parking lot layout where it's kind of like a donut where the parking lot was around. This would kind of, you'll see nest around within the building themselves and we'll get there. But it's seven point nine nine acres, it's on Reynolds Mountain Boulevard, kind of positioned here between the mountain housing apartment complex here to the east. And then we have the Reynolds Academy up here. And then you have a nursing home across the street. And this is the one that was previously disturbed like a racetrack on the aerial. So also here, it is identified as a commercial land use, so there's no change to the future land use map. Just keep trucking here. This is the aerial photo, as you see, most of the site was disturbed, it is deep slope. And they had a modification on that grading allowance and we're tweaking that just a little bit further. So here's the proposed site plan. If you need a refresher on where the other look like, I think everybody remembers. As you can see, there's three smaller buildings, I think it fits the site better with parking in between. That's about a hundred and seventy-six parking spots, based on our code require a hundred and eighty. They're asking for a one point four parking spot requirement. I don't think that'd be a problem, it's not like this is something that would push in, push traffic or parking into a neighborhood onto somebody else's property, this is kind of isolated, so they could manage any user conflicts within their site. Still similar building elevation, higher four stories on the downhill, three stories on the uphill. There was an average height allowance of forty-eight feet with that. Street view, you can see this is back in the fall. The site's over here, mountain housing is up here on the hill.
Ricky, this is the project that got the first segment of the bond issue affordable housing money from the county, right?
I believe so, might want the applicant, I think you've actually had probably more conversations with them than I have. Sounds like you're staying up to date. But the project seems to be moving forward and so it's a bit, it's a huge win for Woodfin to have this project and people experience. First two modifications are the current modifications, the LED lighting, the modification on the height limit, we're just carrying that forward. The current impervious and land disturbance, we're ticking it up just a little bit at ninety-one percent. They're still leaving that western peripheral that's adjacent to the residentially zoned property undisturbed. There's a little creek in that area as well. Our impervious surface was still holding basically the same. The retaining wall height, you remember that one building was integrated into it, now we're going to have a few walls. The tallest one's thirteen foots, six inches, so just a minor deviation. And then that parking requirement, we require one and a half spaces per unit, which is one eighty. They're just asking for one point four, so it's a hundred and sixty-eight. They're providing a hundred and seventy-six, but if there happens to be a, a large rock outcrop or something, we're not back here again over one or two spots. So they, let's just do one sixty-eight is the requirement. I'm, I'm trying not to move too fast, but I'm also know you've seen this project before, very familiar. Is there any questions at this moment? Okay, keep moving. So we're shortening those building facades, I think that actually will fit better into the hillside. As y'all are well aware, this area transitions from our kind of most dense commercial up to residential, so it's a good transition. All, most developments occurring in that previously disturbed area. And there's been some erosion problems up there, I think an adjacent neighbor came and spoke at the planning board. And he's eager for that to be remedied and they met, spoke with him, they, they're like, this will solve your problem. So I think they're going to fix a, an abandonment issue. And then of course, we're going to have another sidewalk and there's, as we know, transportation corridor, there's nearby employment. Somebody could technically walk to work nearby across the street or in that very close proximity or catch the Trailblazer to Weaverville. And then, like I said, July first of this year, the planning board met, they heard this and recommended the modification five to zero. And then of course, we're concurring with that and recommending approval. I will stop there. If you have questions for the applicant, I can flip it over to them and bring them up here. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Go back two slides to the number of stories. You said four stories on the downslope?
Downside, yeah.
Downside?
Three on the up.
Does this set a precedent for us?
Well, we have actually four-story buildings in this area already. So we have the hotel that's here. And then we have the senior residence, living facility that we approved a couple of years ago that is working through engineering design. They've submitted, that is also a four-story building in this area as well. And then we have this come up the hill and it's more integrated.
Reynolds Village is just diagonal from it.
Yeah, Reynolds Village is just over here to the south. So I would say that, you know, that's part of the CZ process, you're not always beholden, always. You're not always beholden, always obligated as a, it's a, what'd you say? President, yes, president. So you're not beholden to precedent because it fits the land use plan. The immediate character of the area already has that, what, for Woodfin's higher rise.
Isn't it also a fact that on steep slope, you are going to have some taller down slope walls?
Yeah.
That normally fit other flat properties.
So the thing is, we could have them just put in taller walls and we still have the same effect with it. And so they're integrating some of that topography relief into the building itself, the four three.
I agree. As a conditional zoning, it's relaxing the requirement for this one. There's nothing for your next applicant for conditional zoning.
And as Shannon also reviewed during your strategic goals, you're all, one of y'all, number one goal is affordable housing. And so this is one of those positive trades that we're giving something.
A great way to put it, Ricky, that if we're going to make a trade off, what do we get? The town of Woodfin, this is a huge win for us.
Especially 100% affordable, yeah.
And they did grab the first, I think, eight million of the 30 million of affordable bond money. So it's a.
That's returning, that's returning a big value to the taxpayers of Woodfin in this area, in Northside.
So staff identified no reason not to approve this.
No, no. And there was really nothing here. I mean, it's, we've already proved it one time. So just, I think actually creating these three buildings fits better. Shannon and I talked, we actually liked this plan. I think the smaller builds and will also allow phasing, whereas you can get a CO, they can get three COs. Whereas right now, the one project, they'd have to wait until the very end. So now we might get some housing quicker.
They do intend to break ground very soon.
Yep. That seems, that's why unfortunately we would like to have them here tonight, but we didn't want to delay a month because time is of the essence for the project.
So on tree coverage, will that increase with the way that it is putting, being put together now?
Yeah. Yeah, actually I had talked to them and so they're going to work to me and looking at the site plan. It appears it meets our landscaping and landscaping standards for vehicle use area. So it appears that they would meet our open space, but definitely meet our, that street tree frontage that we would require. They've already met that. The vehicle use area landscaping, our calculation, looking at that site plan. It appears that it will also meet our recently adopted standards, even though they technically wouldn't have to. They're going ahead and meeting that based on that design layout. So I think that's a good, also they're already doing it for us.
Other questions from council?
No, thank you.
All right. And do y'all have any questions for the applicant? I can bring them up. If not, then.
You did, you did such a thorough job last year getting this through that I think it's been paved.
Okay. They're waiting in the wings, but if not, they're quite happy to, all right. And so I will.
Okay.
Keep moving. Here's a suggested motion.
We will first have the public hearing.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Too quick.
I know, well, it'll be short. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 6:33 PM. No one signed up, but if there is anyone that would like to testify or make a comment about this, identify yourself. It's a public hearing to adjust this project approval known as Rocky River Apartments. Last call. Seeing as there is no one, I'll close this public hearing at 6:34 and the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the community shopping two conditional, wrong one. Okay. The conditional zoning, I'm looking up of here, 7.99 acres as shown on exhibits A and E for the community shopping two conditional zone, subject to the conditions identified in the exhibit D project conditions. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request promotes a mix of housing types and affordability options by working with developers, I can't talk, to incorporate income restricted housing into new developments, promotes long-term fiscal responsibility by growth in areas with existing services and supports walkable employment centers so that residents may both live and work in Woodfin.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any further questions from council before we vote? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? There are none. Who is, who's on the line, Ricky?
Andrea Gonzalez and Charles Stiftr.
To both of you, congratulations. Thank you. And we look forward to seeing bulldozers on that site very, very soon.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. We're excited.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Ricky. Good job. Next item is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance 2025-15, which is a request to conditionally rezone a 0.92 acre parcel from R10 residential to R10, R10 to community shopping, a conditional zoning project. The property is located at Three Puffin Lane. The applicant is Jeff Young on behalf of the property owners. Mr. Hurley.
All right. Thank you for the introduction as well. This is located right across from Kirby and just south of the Craggy Mountain Railroad. So that's a very transitional area where we moved from residences and manufacturer home communities right into the Wever Road corridor, very fast, you know, it transitions very quickly. And so we were working with the applicant to try to figure out a project, it seemed like a good project that could take a property that's vacant, that's actually been kind of abandoned and neglected in foreclosure for a while and get something that's potentially a project, provide some buffer between those more almost industrial uses to the north and west and provide some sort of like upgraded property that can also enhance that lived environment for the neighbors. So here's the map. So just as a way of orientation, Kirby is here. Grace Fuel Oil is here. Beaver Dam Creek runs right through this area and Weaverville Road. Craggy Mountain Line and the railroad right away is here. So I should back up. See, all these areas are 10. So it's kind of a nose of R10 here to the south. And CS kind of comes around from a nine o'clock position and kind of comes all the way around to about three.
Ricky, are those homes above it on the hillside above?
Yeah, this kind of climbs up a very, almost not say a cliff, but it climbs quickly and up in this area.
But those are single family homes, okay.
This is all single family. Most of it's single family detached.
Did any of those residents come to planning and zoning?
We had one resident, I believe in this area, came, she wasn't immediately adjacent, didn't get notified, but came and spoke and mostly about use of the property. And so we worked on reducing the allowable uses down just a couple to, so that it would, you know, a daycare was one use they were concerned about that could create a lot of noise. And so we'll see that in the conditions. The future land use map identified this area as to remain residential one. So we will have to amend our flum map as part of the motion tonight if you motion to approve. So this will convert when we go to record this to commercial. Here's the aerial. You can see a little bit more clearly. As you can see, Kirby, which is a important service provider in our community for all of Buckland County, very important, is directly across. And so there's a lot of that truck traffic. Everybody remember, if y'all took that tour, you remember this very busy site. And this home is abandoned. So this house would come out, use the shared driveway and then you, 2,400 square foot structure go in this area.
And are the other two structures, there's a lot of activity on that project. Are they occupied?
This is not occupied. This.
Just go, no, inside the blue box.
It's like, that is like a little garage, residential garage that be converted.
Got it.
This home is in very, 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 very poor shape. It's, it is definitely would be correct to co violation. Get rid of it. So here's the site plan. Here's Kirby, the shared driveway, which is named Puffin Lane. And so he has a little bit of limited parking. And then there's like a little bit of a vehicle use area that comes around behind. We do require a buffer strip. So this will be a planted buffer yard down between the neighbors. That'll be continued. Obviously we have existing vegetation. And when we get into the actual zoning permit, we'll actually identify trees and vegetation on the detailed site plan review to clarify, because it is residential here too. So we will make sure that that's all specked out, the size of tree, what it is. This is what will be planted.
And the two residents above did not come in?
He met, this, this resident not come in. I had spoke to them when the letters went out the first time. And made sure they were connected with the applicant, but I think he's been on site, met with him a couple of times. And then he walked out and made contact with these property owners as well. This is more of a vacant property. It's kind of more of an investor group here. But 2,400 square foot building, convert this to a storage building and then you have the Craggy Mountain Line. Is there any question about the site plan? I'm not trying to move quick.
You're doing a good job.
So really on this one, the only real modification we had was use LED lighting. We'll get that lighting code fixed. And I would also point out too, it's pretty wooded. So we did, even though this predates, the application predates our greenway and open, greenway and landscaping standards. We're going to get the green space standards to meet our newly adopted code. So we asked the applicant to meet that new standard. And a lot of this will also remain, as far as street trees, the reality is there's actually an intervening property that is not part of this request. It's actually here with Kirby owned it. But this will be left vacant too.
One thing I'll ask and that the mayor has talked about before in that area, I know this won't provide a lot more traffic, but Northwood and Avenue was in bad shape through that area.
Yeah.
Is that on our list to?
That's a state maintained road.
That is state maintained.
Yeah. So, which is probably good because we don't have to deal with the bridge.
That part's true, but the other part is.
Adrian's like, that would have blowed the budget out for the next three, four decades probably.
And this, not related to this project, but just to the south of there, there are some utility wires of some kind being held up by a leaning tree. Could someone please, have you already noted that? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Move on.
All right. So. So I'll get through it. So the area is, like I said, it's a mixture of commercial use along Weaver Road. As we move from Mo's BBQ and interest in Reynolds Village, it transitions town to Brookdale, Northwood Avenue's residential. We're hoping that the, and the goal is that the proposed building and the buffer yard will actually provide some more structured screening for the residents that are immediately to the east and south. Having a building and some vegetation that would actually help block some sound, block some light that may be emitting from Kirby and/or from the highway, maybe get some greens, kind of reuse that area a little bit better. And then we also limited the permitted uses and hours of operation because the point of the CZ is to try to restrict that. We don't want to just have a free for all where it turns into, we said, a restaurant that would have hours up to two, three o'clock in the morning. Don't want it to be that disruptive. And so I can flip over to that if we need to, but there's a limitation, basically personal services, like a destination, like a massage therapy or somebody, maybe an accountant, like an office where you've got an appointment, one at a time. And then as well as his landscaping business. And then if there would be retail sales, it's only incidental. So if you were to be a massage therapist and you had like a small use of building, you might sell some oils or something to go. But the principal use is the office, your personal services. We just didn't want the daycare, the retail restaurant, the high traffic generators to be respected. And again, planning board met on July 1st about this request. We kind of hammered mostly on reducing those uses down. And that seemed to be where the work took place in that meeting and they wound up recommending five to zero after further limiting the uses.
Are there questions from council to staff or a need to ask the property?
I'm really, yeah. And the applicant, property owner is here. I'm sorry, I'm trying not to move too fast. I'm sorry. It feels like I'm rushing, but I try not to.
If something's not that complicated.
I'm trying to, I'll overtalk it. Shannon tries to warn me too.
Any questions from council? If not, if there's a need to hear from the developer, we'll have a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll leave it to y'all to.
Okay. I'll open this public hearing at 7:44 PM. There were no residents or people, no person signed up, but if someone would like to address council on this, we'll allow that. It's nice when they're not complicated. All right. Last call. We'll close this public hearing at 7:45. Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Very good.
All right. I've got a suggested motion. Remember it's two parts because we have to amend. Do the rezoning, amend the land use plan.
No, I don't have my glasses. Sorry.
I'll do it. All right. I move to approve the conditional zoning of 0.92 acres as shown on exhibits A and E from R10 residential district, R10 to community shopping, conditional zone CSCZ, subject to the conditions identified in the exhibit D project conditions. And two, to amend the Woodfin Together Future Land Use Map for areas identified on exhibit B from residential one to commercial. And find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, uses the future land use map to guide development decisions and while protecting land and buildings for small and large scale employment uses. Two, promotes long-term fiscal responsibility by encouraging growth in areas with existing services over other areas. Three, balances the supply of land for housing and employment and protects land for economic development and supports local small businesses and ensure an adequate supply of appropriately located and sized employment space. Four, makes government decision-making accessible and transparent to all residents.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any need to further discuss? We're ready for vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Heard five, five oh. Thank you very much. Good job, Ricky.
Thank you.
And item, item three, a public hearing consideration of an ordinance, number 2025-16, a request to close an unopened right of way known as Crescent Avenue, located before 74, located between 74 and 86 Crestfield Avenue. Petitioners are Eric D. Bowles, Stephanie Guznell and Andrew Taylor. Mr. Hurley.
All right. Thank you. So we had two adjacent properties that were requesting this closure. I'll say that staff, we kind of paused on this when we sent it. Most time, you know, it's very straightforward. But we, as Shannon will say, we, we want to make sure that when we close right of ways, we're not losing opportunities for future connections or even if it's pedestrian pathways. So we kind of looked at this a little bit more carefully. But after getting on site, I'll say that this portion of the right of way is basically a cut slope. And it's at least a one-to-one slope. When I went out there, there was a lot of relief in a 25 foot wide space. It was 12, 14 feet high. If there were to be any infrastructure improvements to be built by the town or developer, developer, there would be a, a retaining wall of some type would be required. So I, even like a 10 foot or bike way or greenway through there would probably be beyond cost prohibitive for us in that area, just to say all that. So we, we looked at that, walked the site with the applicants before we wrote the staff report. So Crestfield is the very bottom. It's actually just through the woods here behind us. There's Short Vine. The town's property is probably just off the screen here where we're at. And you go down Jonestown Road here, past the park, you'll pass Vine, which is really steep. And there's a sign for Crescent. It looks like a driveway to a house and that's it. It's literally about 25 feet of pavement and it stops. There's a home right here. And you have to go down Crestfield and drop all the way around. There is a driveway that runs right up to these homes right here. And then there's another driveway that kind of shares in right in this area and kind of comes in and out of that right of way. All these parcels that are budding are owned by the petitioners. There's probably one parcel that is likely this one that would be landlocked and would be required to be recombined. And we've talked about that. And so if it was to be approved, we'd ask them to recombine that in there.
That doesn't have to be done as part of this tonight?
No, we would just release that. I would just hold on to that being handed over till I get that recombination done.
So the recombination is part of the expectation?
Yeah, I would need, yeah, we'd need that. We could probably condition a request that, yeah, that be recombined and then we'll let that go.
Do you recommend that condition?
I would say we probably need to get that on there just so that it's officially there. Now, these other parcels that they may own, they still butt, butt a right of way. So no need to mess with those. They're, they're situation normal, same status.
Okay.
Just for reference, the plat that created this back about 100 years ago, so you can see this area. You know, so they were just laying out right of ways, maybe a surveyor from Florida. There's a lot of that that happened in this area. You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised the number of surveyors from Florida have done this. So all the properties above the portion of right way requesting are owned by the requister, so nobody else. As I mentioned, if there was to be left open, if someone was to develop it, the town doesn't build roads, so it's going to be up to a developer to build that road. I don't know if anybody would ever build a road because they don't have any property to develop. They'd be building 400 feet of road for nothing. Not going to get that. Will not impact the development or further subdivision of any properties besides what the own petitioners are. And then, as mentioned, the requisters will be required to recombine any existing lots that become not more non-conforming due to the change in access, which is.
So a motion can assume that.
Yes.
Fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've only identified one lot that would be issued. And so we've recommended that be approved. So is there any questions about it? But I'd say we did walk the site and we did scrutinize a little bit extra.
I walked it over the weekend too. Any, if there are no questions from staff, if there's no reason to ask the petitioners, we'll have a public hearing. We'll open this public hearing at 6:50 PM. Again, no one signed up, but if there's anyone that has cause or reason, we'd be happy to recognize you.
I just have a question.
Please, would you, do you mind coming to the podium? It's required. Thank you. Tell us who you are.
My name's Nathan Miller. I live at 46 Jonestown Road. I got a letter about this, so I just figured I'd come up and learn about what's going on, only because I don't know, and I've had questions asked of me of like the sewer and the water and the this, and they add, does any of this affect what might be underneath that?
So we did follow up with the Woodfin Water. There's no utility lines in the right of way, and the sewer is actually located west on private property, so there's no actual utilities in the right of way.
It's a great question. We're fortunate, we have super staff that they ask those questions in every one of these, but thank you for asking. Any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, we'll close this public hearing at 6:52 PM. And there's a, is there a motion from council?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve the petition for the right of way closure. Currently submitted as it is in the public's interest and meets the development needs of the community in that the closure request, one, will not impede access to existing property or preclude further subdivision or infill development, and two, will convert the land area into taxable property.
And then just, I guess we add a condition about any lot, non-conforming lot be recombined.
You accept that under your motion?
Yeah, sorry.
That's perfect. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I heard five yeses. Thank you. Good job, Ricky.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all for me tonight, so I will.
Okay. You're dismissed. You're relieved. Item four, under new business review of allocations for the Town of Woodfin Community Partners Grant Program. Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief, but the Community Partners Grant Program began in 2023, and the funding in those years since has grown, originally at $58,500, has now grown to $95,500, as was approved in your current fiscal year 26 budget. The application process initially in 2023, it was a competitive process. We bypassed that in 2024 and renewed the previous grants. Two grants were added in 2025, including the emergency assistance and the river cleanup grant that I've mentioned earlier. There were two additional grants in 2025 that were not utilized, and I'm going to give you a little bit more detail here. The 2025 grants, these were what was allocated. The ABCCM Emergency Assistance was one of those renewals. Catholic Charities for Non-Food Essentials for $6,000, that was one of the grants that was not collected last year. And the Riverlink River Rats Education Program also was not collected last year. So, and then the Emergency Home Repair Grant was one of the two new grants that was issued, and the Asheville Greenworks River Cleanup for $12,000 was issued. So if you add those all together, the total is $95,500. So when we were budgeting for earlier in the spring, when we didn't know what the decision would be, we went ahead and budgeted the full amount. However, we are not recommending that you renew the Catholic Charities or the Riverlink Rats Essentials. So this is what we are proposing for fiscal year 26. ABCCM Emergency Assistance, that again would be renewed. New Bridge Baptist Church in lieu of Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities fell off when the monthly food market moved from the Woodfin Community Center to the New Bridge Baptist Church parking lot, and then with Hurricane Helene as well. So they're focusing their energy on other projects. New Bridge Baptist has stepped in to take over that role, and so we would like to just simply shift, or we are recommending that we shift that grant amount to New Bridge Baptist Church, but it's for the same purpose, with the exception, I put non-food essentials, that's how it was originally described, but as I understand it, New Bridge also does some additional supplemental food items as well.
I'll add something in there if it's okay. What's happened is that Manna Food Bank has changed their process, and so the market does not know until one week ahead of time what they're going to receive. And I know one of the markets in the last three or four months, we realized there was no bread, and I went out and bought 90 loaves that we then in turn gave out. There are also people in the community who have donated toward this, so it is missing food items in addition to diapers, wipes, et cetera. And what I'd like for us to think about, if you don't mind, would be to take that $6,000 and add that $2,500 surplus to give New Bridge a total that includes both of those amounts because the numbers of people there are increasing monthly. They do a beautiful job, and I'd just like for you all to think about that, please.
And I agree, they do a beautiful job, but can I ask, do you know what the percentage of their, their clients are Woodfin citizens since New Bridge is actually in Asheville?
We do not ask that question.
Yeah, it's never been anything we've been able to track.
Crowd looks the same when I go.
It does. Whether it's the Y market or whether it's New Bridge.
That's a good question.
I just thought that needed to be addressed as far as, because people know that New Bridge is an Asheville church, not a, not a Woodfin.
And you do have an obligation as a public purpose doctor to make sure your funds are going to serve your citizens, but I, and I'm glad you addressed it. I just don't have a legal concern because I'm certain that being where it is and after the only service we get through our property that we knew there were lots of Woodfin residents that came there, but I think it's good to just know for a pretty experienced purpose.
Absolutely. Yeah, and one of the reasons we liked New Bridge Baptist, I mean, from a, from a layout standpoint, it's ideal, large parking lot, large facility, but it's also a church that a lot of our local residents attend. So it's well-known to the Woodfin community, even though it's technically not in Woodfin. And then, of course, the other two grants that were added in 2025, the MHO Emergency Home Repair and Asheville Greenworks River Cleanup. So both were issued in 2025, but because of the hurricane and other delays, they were not able to actually start work. Asheville Greenworks couldn't start in the last fiscal year because the park was not available for them, and so, and, and the river was not available for them because of the FEMA debris cleanup. So we are recommending that the Asheville Greenworks and the MHO shift to include fiscal year 26 as well. And.
The money from last year that wasn't used just stayed in our general fund?
Correct. Yeah. This is the suggested motion. If you wanted to consider doing something with that $2,500 surplus, you know, you could amend this motion, or if not, then it would just simply be added back into the general fund as the mayor's.
Other questions for Shannon?
I'm comfortable adding the surplus to the $6,000.
You want to make the motion?
Sure. I move to authorize and direct the town manager to renew funding agreements with ABCCM for FY 2026 in the amount of $50,000 for emergency assistance; to enter into a new agreement with the New Bridge Baptist Church in the amount of $6,000 plus $2,500 for non-food and supplemental food items; and three, update the existing agreement with MHO to extend the grant window through FY 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
I heard five yeses. Thank you. Great job. Wonderful. We have something we can be very proud of as a town. We're spending some of our tax dollars to help the people with the greatest need in our town. All right, we did add an item to the agenda. It's to discuss designated, designating Woodfin ABC Store allocations, the portion of their profit that they give to the town to address a specific town need. It was, that's a result of last month's meeting, the joint meeting with the ABC Board and us, that it might make it easier to convince Woodfin residents and others to buy merchandise there instead of at other ABC stores if they know and if they can advertise that, you know, all the proceeds that we can are going to be shifted to the town, but they would now begin saying, and those will be used for X. So if you want to do that, we would need to name X.
I have a question. We have talked about naming the parks as the recipient. Is the way considered under the parks or would it be parks plus way? No, it's part of the parks. There is some public, I wonder if there's a PR reason to say parks plus way, but I'm comfortable just parks.
Other thoughts?
I mean, the main, I said on the ABC Board meeting yesterday, and it seemed like, and I remember Phil, you had indicated we needed to address this, and they said, it would be great because it helps us be able to go back to local businesses and say, this is where your money's going. Here's why you stay in town. And so I said, let's, let's see if we can wrangle that. And the parks would be, oh, I don't, I'm not clear on what things we can, I know schools are, no, no.
No.
But what other?
We have other options.
Yeah.
We do, we have plenty of options, but I think the parks is the one that the public might be most interested in. As opposed to.
And we're giving so much of the publicity in the next couple of years as well.
Yeah.
Any objection to parks? If they have another idea.
No, sir.
I have a question. Does it limit us in any way when we're budgeting?
No, because this is really what we're, we're just saying the revenue that we receive are applying to our parks, and so we.
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes, nothing, no specific amount of money that's being taken out of another pocket.
A sales marketing.
It goes into the general fund. It'll stay in the general fund. It's just being.
It basically lets the store promote the fact that we're doing it and use it in their conversations with potential retail customers. It's just a good.
They're not allowed to do promotion. This would probably give them an out where they could talk about this and it wouldn't be called promotion because it's a fact.
That's my belief. That's what.
And then we could get the canopy over the sandbox.
Brought to you by.
It's not additional money.
No. Money we are receiving, yes.
And I think this is a very creative idea of Connie Walts, and the board evidently liked it. Does somebody want to make a motion as to what the Woodfin ABC Store allocation to the Town of Woodfin would be directed toward?
Sure, I'll take a stand. Move that we designate the Woodfin ABC Store allocations that the town receives to be directed to address supporting our parks and greenways.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
That's five yeses. That's great. Thank you. That concludes our new business. Mr. Henning, Town Attorney, will we be adjourning to the private chambers?
Yes, sir. Today's session, the reasons set out in GS 143, actually, 1183, so attorney employed or any of the public body in order to serve the area by privilege, and A5 to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning positions we did in Myers and half of the town concerning acquisition of real estate.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We stand adjourned temporarily. We'll take a, how about a seven-minute break, and we'll get back to it. Thank you, members of the.